Okay.
Okay, we will call the regular meeting of the Select Board to order for October 25th, 2021. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, Carl.
First item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as is.
I'll second it.
I believe, second, discussion. I believe there's one item that we have to add, and that's the minutes of September 27th, 2021. And we do not have the minutes for 10:11, either the special or the regular. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. Citizens comments or concerns, items not on the agenda. Are there any citizens who wish to address the board? Items not on the agenda.
I do.
Okay, please identify yourself.
Yes, Laura J. Kloski, representing Castleton University. And if I could, I'd like to introduce one of my coworkers, Matt Moriarty. He is our Castleton Director of Grants. And he has a new grant that we think might be of some interest to the Castleton community, and we wanted to share a little bit about it with you tonight.
Okay, have him go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, Laura, be with you everyone. We just wanted to share the study that Castleton University has just received a grant of nearly $500,000 from the National Endowment for the Communities. And will be using towards the creation of a museum and a learning laboratory in Breen Grove. That's the early 19th century home located at the intersection of South Street and Senator Lee, sort of kitty corner to our campus center. But some of you may have known the first renovation work and some archaeology over there for the last couple of years. The museum will focus on local history of the Castleton area through interactive exhibits, photography, and 3D printed copies of material culture. We're also anticipating that the museum will be a center for educational outreach primarily with Kate D. Kaufsky. We're really hoping this can be a go-to resource for local educators. We're also very excited for the project's potential, local impact, and bringing up things like local tourism. And are very interested in working partnerships with local organizations and state organizations developing exhibits. This will be going on for several years, so we will certainly be getting a nice jumpstart from the grant. We are in touch and having the present time, which needs reminding, for the renovation. We expect this revised activity reviewed in the coming months. We are putting out a press release tomorrow or the next day, and expect to see some media coverage over the next few days. We also anticipate we'll be doing some additional fundraising over the coming months, so we'll probably hear from what they can and are here about us quite a bit. But in other regards, thank you, and please let me know if there's any questions.
Any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Are there other citizens who wish to? Time out. Are there other citizens who wish to address the board? Items not on the agenda. You want to pause here, Mike?
No, I'm probably just crawling around disrupting everybody, but you can tolerate me doing that, we're good to go.
Okay. Any other citizens who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. Report form from the police chief? Don't believe we have it.
Nope.
Joe, do you have it?
I don't have it, Mr. Chairman, but I was wondering, were we going to consider any of the minutes that we were provided in the packet?
Oh, we skipped over that? Didn't mean to do that, okay. We'll go back to that, yeah, we'll go back to that. Is there a motion to accept the minutes of July 26th, September 27th, and the special meeting on Wednesday, October 20th?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes for July 26th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Discussion of the minutes of July 26th? Nothing?
I'm good.
You guys are all good. Joe?
Just a misspelling on page four, under the third bullet, Crystal became Krustlehaven.
That's true.
Other than that, they look good.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting those motions as corrected indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move on to the next one.
The chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the Select Board minutes for Monday, September 27th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Joe?
Even though I wasn't at this meeting, I have a lot of suggestions, because there were a lot of 5-0 votes. And you couldn't have had five votes in favor of anything, because I wasn't here. And then on a few items in which Mr. Spalding recused himself, there were four 0 votes. Those should have been three 0 votes. And then there's a bunch more of 5-0 votes throughout the document. So with those, I'm not going to vote on this, but I'd like to see those changed.
Got those, Mike? Okay. All those in favor of accepting it with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstained, Joe, okay. Moving on to the last one, special meeting.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes for the special meeting on Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? I think that's the evening we set a record with a two-minute meeting.
I think it was more like four.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm just going to recuse myself that I wasn't here for that.
Okay. Bob recused himself for that, Mike. Okay, the police chief's report, I don't seem to have that.
I don't have it.
We don't have that?
No, I think they were put in the mailboxes late this afternoon.
No, there was nothing on there, because I just got mine tonight.
I think they're in his mailbox.
Okay. Moving on, the Recreation Commission, address the sl- whoops, timeout. Yes, Roy, Roy Newton?
I have a question for the police department and the town Castleton. Have you seen any communications from the Department of Justice or the FBI concerning parents going to school board meetings?
I don't believe we've done any, but that question, of course, you'd direct it to the police department, Roy. You can contact the chief in the morning, I'm sure he'll be glad to answer for you.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Mike, do you have any information on that?
I have no information on that.
Okay. You're welcome. Now move on to the Recreation Commission. Address the Select Board about the future of recreation in Castleton.
Yes.
You're up, folks.
Okay, so my name is Amy Clapp, and I'm the Director of New Program at Castleton Recreation. And I'm Melinda Hart, and our partner in crime here, Martha Clifford, is not here, and we don't know why. So we're going to sort of wing it, because she was going to, but I'm going to read a statement, and then we'll take it from there, sort of. But we wanted to come to the Select Board tonight, because as a recreation commission, we have been in discussion over the, probably the last nine months to a year, about the possibility of presenting to the board, and ultimately to the voters of Castleton, the development of a recreation director in the town. So for the last however many years, since 19-
Seventy something?
Yes.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one?
I think so.
It's been a recreation commission with different volunteers on the commission, as well as different people taking spiting positions. So I'm just going to read my statement, and maybe Martha will show up in that time, and she'll read her statement, and Melinda has something to say. But what we wanted to just open this up and share this with you, with hopes of collaborating and developing what will be the best position for recreation in the future for Castleton. So that is our point. So it is with much anticipation that I've looked forward to presenting to all of you tonight. Nine years ago, I came on board as the Director of New Program for Castleton Rec. The commission wanted to grow the programs beyond sports that were to be offered by the town. It was a job I took over enthusiastically, because I'd always been involved in town rec programs since my first job in high school. I believe in town recreation as a way to unite and level the playing field in a town, to provide opportunities to all kids, and to make a town someplace families and people want to live in. I have loved working with Martha and the different volunteers who have come in and out of the commission. And in an odd way, I'm thrilled that we are at this crossroads, at this position of working together with all of you to make a recreation director a full-time job. It is odd, because it is essentially working myself out of the position that I've had. And I'm enthusiastic, and I am enthusiastic to work with all of you to hopefully develop this position and put it on the ballot so that the programs can continue to grow. When I started, Castleton Recreation provided three sports, soccer, basketball, and baseball to its youth. Under my tenure, the commission worked together to provide additional opportunities for individual sports, arts and crafts, drama, and dance. All in all, over the last nine years, there have been more than 20 new programs offered to our community. Everything from dancing to Michael Jackson's Thriller on the library lawn, creating homemade holiday gifts for loved ones, glass fusion for adults and kids, archery, drumming circles, outdoor track, tracking and survival, to yoga, art classes, Valentine's making, pottery, and sailing. These programs have continued to grow, including obtaining a grant for $36,000 this year and running an all-day, full-day summer program. The growth of Castleton Recreation has been phenomenal and extremely rewarding. It gave me an identity around town that I love. However, the fact of the matter is that in order to even maintain the already existing programs and honestly get them going again post-COVID, and considering all the ways the town has changed in the last 10 years, this can't be anybody's second job anymore, like it has been mine. Castleton is ready for this. The foundation has been set, and I would like to explore how to most successfully do this for the good of the town. There are so many grants that can be written to help Castleton Rec grow more, grants for summer and after-school programming, grants for enhancing playing fields. This is a time-consuming process that can't be done in one or two-hour increments each day. The collaborations that are possible around town have grown. Castleton Recreation should have a stronger presence with the July 4th committee, Castleton Day Committee, the Winter Market. There is the potential for growing Castleton Rec with the possibility of actually having our own space for running programs, which would be huge. But if that doesn't happen, procuring or recollaborating with the spaces we use is going to take time. Essentially, we lost all of our spacing after the events at Carahaven High School with Jack Sawyer. This list goes on and on of ways that the town can grow through rec. And from the job description, which may or may not be in the packet that you guys got, you can see that it's a full-time job here. So this is, we've laid out what the description of the job, if you take our three jobs together, what it looks like. Finally, I feel like the time is right. You have three women who have worked collaboratively for many years to develop the sports program, new programs, and Crystal Beach to what they are today. It is the right time to develop these three arms of Castleton Recreation into a full-time position. The possibilities are endless, and the time is right. I apologize.
Thank you, Amy.
I said I was going to start with Martha Rockton.
Next.
All right, so I'm Melinda Hart, I've been with the commission since 2014. Honestly, I came on board because I had kids, I live in Hubbardton, I was a non-voting member of the commission. And I saw the kind of disorganization that the youth sports were under when I came on, and I kind of made it my mission to make it more organized. I got each sign up online, I took over the inventory of all the gear, which has saved the town a ton of money, because they don't have to buy new stuff every year. I will say that the amount of work that I do to organize youth sports is definitely not a part-time job. I work two other jobs, I run my own business, I work with a lot of different rec departments. Every town that has a vital, like vibrant thriving community, has a rec department that pays someone to do it. I think Castleton would really greatly benefit from that. And that is all I really want to say.
Thank you. Martha?
Okay, I was going to give a little bit of history. We try. Backtrack, hopefully, but I won't be repetitive. But the commission has been in effect since 1970. And in that time, between now and then, Castleton's population has doubled. We operate with a six-to-nine-member board, and we, I don't know that we've ever had nine members, and most of the time we're running less than six. And as these ladies have said, they all work, they work. I also work. And we also have the sports programs, we have the after-school programs that these two ladies run. There is an adult rec section of the commission, but that is not running, has not been running for quite a few years. And we are, we lack staff, and we don't have a whole lot of interest, we've not heard a lot of interest from the town. So that kind of has fallen by the wayside. That's one thing the director could kind of revise. I'm sure there's an need for it. I'm going to do mostly Crystal Beach, because I've been running that for many years. We open on Memorial Day, close on Labor Day. And gate staff works that, it's usually a 15- or 16-hour week opening. And then the maintenance staff comes on two weeks prior to open up and stays on two weeks after to close up. We have a lead maintenance man, we have four part-time, 20, 20, a 10, and a 15-hour position. And we do have someone come in that works on our hours, because that's critical, we can't, we don't have time to send our hours out, so we have somebody come in about eight hours a week from hours. My particular job there is director. So I am there day-in, day-out, making sure that all, I'm a gopher, and I do maintenance, I do, I don't know what you mean, I do scheduling for maintenance and gate. And I just keep everything kind of on an even keel. And if you've been in town, you know that it's been good. And in the last probably eight, 10 years, it's been really nice. And we have a lot of people who come and tell us that they love it, and come back and Right, so we have, I'm sure Amy probably could get this, but we've significantly improved in numbers with our programming. And if we look around our immediate area, can't look at Robin, because that one's way too, way too big, but if you look at Coleman, Brandon, Millberry, that's where, yeah, I mean, we offer more programming than they do. So we should really talk about that. But I also know that it's gotten too big for us, and we really need a recreation director. And what we're asking this board is to submit a budget, the budget that we submit, if it could go to the voters, that we can let the voters decide whether we want a full-time
Any questions from the board, for the ladies? Seeing none. You're, I know you're familiar with the budget process, and you would submit your budget to Mike as a town manager, then I'm sure Mike will meet with you as he meets with every other department, and then he will make a recommendation to the board, which of course the board can accept or reject. But once the budget is finalized by the board, it becomes the board's position to defend the budget. So you know the process, so if you wish to naturally put this in there, submit it as part of your proposal for your budget for next year. Anything else on this?
I think that Martha should get a plaque of the beach, because you'll never find someone to put as many hours as she did into Crystal Beach. I've never seen anyone volunteer at the level that Martha's got there.
Sure. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Sam Carlson. Update on the proposed wind turbine on Grandpa's Knob, followed by public and Select Board comments. Sam?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, could I have about 10 minutes? Is that, is that okay?
That's okay.
Shut me off at 10 minutes if I'm rambling?
Be happy to.
Thank you. Yeah, you would.
He's good at it.
So thank you again for the opportunity to present to you the Grandpa's Knob Community Wind Project. I was here about a month ago, we had an initial conversation, I wanted to update you about what's been going on over the past month. Just to recap, the proposed Grandpa's Knob Community Wind Project is a single turbine that would be placed up at Grandpa's Knob, about 1,000 feet away from the existing 300-foot-high communications tower. It would be placed sort of to the northwest of where that existing tower is, at an elevation 100 feet below where that communications tower is right now. The tower is about 295 feet tall, meaning it's shorter than the communications tower, but then there are the 143-foot blades that rotate, so if you take the net of all that with the lower elevation, everything, the blades are about 43 feet taller at the top of their rotation than the existing 310-foot communications tower. It's a single turbine using the existing road that goes up Grandpa's Knob, using the existing power lines that are already in place, serving the communications tower. This, we believe, will be, will present a minimal amount of environmental impact, because we don't have to clear any trees for the road, for the power lines. Okay? This project is completely different from the 2012 project that was proposed along a seven-mile stretch of ridgeline. There were 20 turbines that were being proposed, and Castleton and neighboring towns fought hard to stop that project, right? I believe in your briefing packet, you have a map of what that 20 turbines project looked like. And there was a very valid question that was asked, I think it was in Pittsburgh. Well, if this one turbine goes up, does that set a precedent? Does that create a little mushroom? And then there'll be other turbines that go up. And I'd like to address that. First, this is the only place where there is an existing road and existing power line. Any other project along that ridgeline would involve a whole lot of additional environmental impacts on that ridgeline. This is where there's already a communications tower. Any other project would be having very different visual impact. The Agency of Natural Resources reviewed that 2012 project, and they made a very clear statement that that project would not get permitted by A&R. So in addition to the local opposition, A&R also made it very clear that they would not permit such a large project. We obviously have to go through the same permitting process, and our project will get reviewed by A&R. They'll have to make a judgment at what the environmental impacts are, but these are totally different projects. And I believe that that, the fact that A&R has gone on record is going to discourage any other developer from trying to do anything along that ridgeline, where there isn't already an existing road and existing power line. Past months, we've reached out to the other towns surrounding, West Rutland, Pittsford, Hubbardton, just came from the Proctor Select Board, we've reached out to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, supposed to have a meeting with them last week, it got canceled because of COVID. We're going to Zoom, I'll be doing a Zoom presentation for them next month. Reached out to the Lake Bomassine Association, Sam, I'm going to mispronounce his name, Drazen, Drazen?
Drazen.
And send him information about the project. I'll be doing a Zoom presentation for the Lake Bomassine Association, either their board or all their members, it's up to them to decide, in either November or December. We are trying to disseminate as much factual information as we can about the project. As part of that, we want to share with you tonight the preliminary visual sort of impact of this project. It's called the Five Mile View Shed. And you should have that in your packets, at the very center of the map is the project site. And wherever you see dark purple, that's where the project will be visible from. If you don't see dark purple, the turbine tower will not be visible. You obviously see that Castleton, Hubbardton, Lake Bomassine, that's where the patches of dark purple are, and that makes sense to the extent that that tower is placed on the northwest side of the ridge. You'll see that West Rutland, basically the project is invisible from West Rutland, invisible from Proctor. It's visible from Pittsfield, from about five miles away, Route 7, Cornhill Road, it would be visible. There's also a little bit of light purple in your handout, where it's light purple, you'll see a couple spots in West Rutland along the marsh there. That's where the top tip of the blades would be visible. The tower wouldn't be visible, but those blades go up a little bit higher, and the last 30 feet of the blades, those would be visible from there. Okay? So that's a Five Mile View Shed map, there's also a 10-mile View Shed map that's been produced. It really doesn't generate any more additional information that's useful for you than the Five Mile one. We propose every month to send you, at the end of every month, through the town manager, an updated project fact sheet that just says, this is what we've done this past month. Think you want me coming every single month, taking up your time, you want a gradual flow of information. What we're starting now is about a 12-month project feasibility process, looking at the visual impacts, the environmental impacts, the sound impacts, right? We have to do geotechnical work up there to figure out, are we going to be able to drill into the existing rock, or do we have to make a concrete pad to situate the tower? As we do all of that analytical work, we're going to be gradually feeding that information to you through the town managers at the end of every month, so you know, here comes a project update. I'll probably want to come back, if you'll have me, in January or February to give you an in-person update on things, but we want to let you know what's going on as part of the process. This is a community wind project. We view this as a nonprofit venture. What that means more concretely is, we are proposing that one-half of the net annual positive cash flow, that's a big phrase, I'm going to repeat it, that one-half of the net annual positive cash flow of the turbine gets shared with the surrounding communities. The other half of that net positive cash flow, we need to pay back the initial investment for the project. You have in your packets, I believe, a graph that shows, over the course of 20 years, cumulatively, what that cash flow would represent. You'll see that for Grandpa's Knob Community Wind LLC, we start out deep in the hole, and over the course of 20 years, that one-half of the annual net positive cash flow pays back that investment. For the communities, there's obviously no cost, it's just going up, and over the course of about 20 years, we estimate that'll be about $3 million. I think that's a conservative figure right now, but I'd rather under-promise right now, and I'd rather come back nine months from now to tell you, our costs don't look like they're going to be as high as we thought they were. We hope it's going to be more than that amount. But that's what we can sort of project right now. That's, of course, above and beyond what the annual taxes that would be going to the town of Castleton on the wind facility would be. That's separate from that, right? Just to be clear on that point. Lastly, I would say the project offers important environmental benefits. That's really, in addition to honoring the legacy of Palmer Putnam and the men who built that project 80 years ago, I was just looking at photographs this afternoon from a woman named Sylvia Callen, whose father was James Edgerton. And I got about 60 amazing photographs from her, from the construction. We're going to be taking and digitizing all of that, those photos, and getting them up on the website. And we want to share that information more broadly with people so people can see what was going on here in Castleton 80 years ago in creating the very first wind energy turbine in the world to be connected to the electrical grid, which is, to me, a pretty cool thing for Castleton to celebrate. The environmental benefits, over the course of this project's lifetime, we estimate that the project will avoid about 85,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide from going into the atmosphere from electricity that otherwise would have been produced by fossil fuel electricity generators. We can talk about what that is equivalent to in other terms, but I think I've already taken up enough of your time. I'm happy to answer any questions that the select board might have or anyone in the community wants to ask us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions from the board? Bob?
Sam, why, why does half the profits have to be shared with the other towns when the other towns can't even see the windmill? What, we're, we're getting the most view of it.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't the majority of the profits come to us?
Yeah. So that's, that's the Pandora's box, right? If it was up to me, now that I see this view shed, I, I hadn't seen this view shed map until last week, all right? And all I could say, well, Pittsburgh, West Rutland, Castle, Hubbardton, or the surrounding towns, I don't know exactly what the relative visibility is going to be from each town, right? When I was thinking a month ago, well, we, we come up with some population-based distribution, right? If it was up to me, looking at the view shed impacts, which I believe is the, is the actual primary cost of this project because we'll have to demonstrate it with independent analysis. But I believe the environmental impacts of this project are minimal because of the fact that there's an existing road and existing power lines. I believe that the primary cause is the visual impact. If we go by what towns are going to be most visually impacted, then absolutely, Castleton and Hubbardton would be the towns that would receive the bulk of that money. So it becomes a, uh, it's a dialogue, and it's a tricky question. Is, is it up to us to say how those resources should be distributed? Is it up to the select boards to meet? And you guys try to come up with, this is how we think would be the most fair way to do it. Maybe each town gets a base of X, and then there's another share that gets distributed based on the relative visual impact? I, I don't know. But it, you've, the devil's in that detail. I see exactly why you're asking the question. And if it was up to me, I would do it based on relative visual impact because I think that's the primary cost of the project. But I didn't know that until I saw this map a week ago.
Other questions?
I got one more.
From the board, Bob?
Yeah. This project can go on with or without our approval and the software. Is that correct or not correct, or?
Technically, that's correct. Technically, the permit comes through the state Public Utility Commission under Section 248. It's a state permit. The permit's called a certificate of public good. That's a state determination. Before the Public Utility Commission would issue such a permit, they would get comments from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. They would take comments from the towns. They get comments from Agency of Natural Resources, Department of Public Service, Department of Historic Preservation. The list goes on and on. Lots of folks, there's a public, there's an official public comment time where anyone can be submitting their views. And at the end, the hearing officer of the Public Utility Commission takes all of that input from the towns, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, A and R, and they then make a judgment that they believe this is worthy of a certificate of public good. They write a 40-page reasoning argument. That goes up to the commissioners of the Public Utility Commission. There are three of them. And they review that, and then they decide whether they agree with the hearing officer or they don't agree with the hearing officer. So the permit does come from the state. There are towns that have opposed projects, and the towns, and the projects have still been permitted. There have been other projects where towns have opposed them, and they haven't been permitted. That's the, that's the process.
Any other questions from the board?
How does our, how does our zoning affect your project? Have you looked into that? I mean, that's, that's owned by a citizen of, the area up there is owned by a citizen of Castleton. It's Castleton property. So how does our zoning affect what you're trying to do?
To my knowledge, it is not affected. Now, the Section 248 permitting is, is not subject to town zoning.
Okay.
I, I, I could be wrong on that, but that's my, that's my understanding of, of the process.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Moving on, questions from the individuals. John Burke?
The, uh, it is true, though, that the town, uh, whether or not their zoning laws would have an impact directly. Uh, the commission does look at the zoning ordinance to determine, uh, what, uh, what effect it might have. Is that not true? They do look at the town plan as part of.
Absolutely, they look at the town plan.
Yep. And in fact, the town can ask to be a party and intervene in the process as well.
Absolutely. Yep.
Any other questions, John?
That's it.
That's it. The gentleman behind, please identify yourself for the minutes.
Hello, my name is John Atwood. I'm the president of the Vermont Angliding Association. And, uh, Sam, my question for you is, is the site of this tower fixed? Currently, as I understand the location of this tower, I believe it poses a direct hazard to our flight operation from our site just to the south of the communications tower. So I was just wondering if, if that site is fixed or whether there's a possibility to locate it somewhere higher on the ridge or slightly to the east of the, the crown of the ridge? Or what the story?
Fair question. I don't know the answer to it. What I can tell you is I've, I've been up Grandpa's Knob Road one time. I've seen where the proposed project site is. It has to be close enough to the road so that we aren't having to build a new road, right? We're trying to minimize any tree clearing and any other sort of additional road construction. The, where the site is, is very close to kind of the last turn before you go up to the top of the, of the knob. I think moving it would, would take it further from the road. It would change, obviously, all the view shed analysis that's going on. I, I can, I can ask the question. I, I don't know the answer right now. I could go back and talk to, uh, the folks who decided that was the project site. That wasn't me. But I can find out.
So the current project site would be directly connected with the American Tower complex up there?
No, it's not directly connected. It's about 1,000 feet away from it.
About a beat to the west.
To the northwest.
Northwest.
Yep.
Other questions? I'll start here. Uh, no one out there. Roy, Roy Newton?
Can you tell me, in simple terms, how much this, um, electricity produces? Like, how many houses are?
Yep. So, um, the projection, and this is going to raise another question that comes back to your point about, a little bit about community benefit. But the projection is that this turbine will generate about 4 million kilowatt-hours a year of electricity. 4 million kilowatt-hours a year of electricity. And we already know the standard offer rate, which I think I shared with you last time, is 11.6 cents a kilowatt hour. So if you take 4 million by 11.6 cents, you can get a sense of what the gross top-line revenue is of this project. And that's another thing we can talk about. We can say, well, maybe the communities just want a percentage of that gross revenue rather than the bottom line, what are the net annual positive cash flows? We can have that conversation too, to take it off the top or off the bottom of the line. But to come back to what does that mean in terms of the, how many houses I, I can, I can get you that information tomorrow, it's not on the top of my head right now. It's, it, it's a lot. It's 4 million kilowatt-hours a year. The average home use is about 8,000 kilowatt-hours. So if you divide it 4 million by 8,000, you'd get about how many homes?
Okay. Thank you.
Jim? Get a chance, look over this way?
Sure.
Um, just a quick question for clarity, Sam. The existing, um, communication tower is 300 feet tall?
310.
310. And you said the base of this tower was 200 feet?
Uh, no. The, the tower height is 295 feet.
295.
But it would be placed 100 feet elevation lower. So it's like, visually, it's like having 195.
I, I get your point there. Um, and then the blades you said were 143?
143.
No, is that radius or diameter?
That is the length of the blade.
So that's radius?
Hold it. Timeout. Go ahead.
The blade is 143 feet.
So that's the ra, so the circle diameter would be twice that?
The circle diameter, the sweep of the whole thing is twice that.
Okay. So the whole tower would be approximately around number 350 feet? No, 450, 450 feet tall from base to top?
438.
Okay.
From base to top minus 100 because you're placing it 100 feet lower. So you're at 338.
No, I'm not talking about what your net is. I'm talking about the gross height of the tower.
Yep, start bottom to top.
It's 400, okay. 438 feet. Okay.
Okay, Dick?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, next person in the audience with a question? Yes, gentleman back there?
Yes, my name is Don Mills, actually, from, uh, Pittsburgh. Um, this theoretical, uh, phenomenon, uh, project that is going to be generated, um, I'm just wondering how that's calculated? From most every time that it has been calculated, it's been calculated on maximum capacity of the turbine, um, which leads me to, to wonder myself as to what actually would be the profit when, uh, in most of these cases with the wind turbines, they're only 20% productive. That being the case, uh, should that figure be cut by 80%?
So I can tell you that that production number, and I'm not an engineer. I take the production number that an engineer has given me. That production number of 4 million kilowatt-hours a year, that's what we're using in our modeling to figure out what the costs and benefits of this project are to us. If we thought that it was going to be a, a far lower capacity factor, well, then we would want to, we would want to figure that into our model to figure out, is this project worth, worth doing or not doing? The exact capacity factor for this, for this project?
You're asking, you're asking people to, uh, when you don't even, you aren't even able to tell us whether it's maximum capacity.
I'm, I'm trying to answer your question.
Or the, uh, the normal capacity.
Yeah. My understanding is, and I can confirm this and get the information to Mike tomorrow, my understanding is that we're estimating a 25% capacity.
You're estimating a 25%.
Correct. Correct. And I will confirm that with Mike. And if you want to reach out to Mike, uh, I'll, I'll get him that information tomorrow. But I, I, I don't have that capacity number in, in my head right now. It's a perfectly valid question to ask.
I can see it has various numbers because at that other meeting, the number hasn't stayed the same. The number has fluctuated.
Very consistent is 4 million kilowatt-hours a year is what our projected production is.
The product has been fluctuating as the weather has changed.
Okay. Are there other questions? Lady, lady here?
I, Sherry Gubow, Seaton, Hubbardton. There's two things that bother me is the size of the tower and the statement about the road. What is the length of the tower when it's being hauled?
Well, it gets, if.
Of the mountain.
It obviously gets hauled up in pieces.
What's the length?
I can't, I don't have that.
Because you've got 300.
Right?
200, so it might be.
Right? It's, it, it might be three sections, it might be four sections.
35 feet of sectioning.
Right? I can, I can tell you that the blade is 143 feet long.
Right.
Right? So that blade has to get up the hill.
Exactly.
Yep.
That road is a class what? I'm just, you know, isn't it a pipe dream that you're saying that you don't have to fix that road? Because I can't believe that that blade is going to get up that mountain without that mountain getting a whole new frigging road.
Perfectly valid question. We have civil engineers right now. Last week, I sent them the 143-foot blade, uh, number, and they are looking at that road right now to see what would have to happen. There's probably a turn or two that would have to get widened, right? We're going to get that information, and we're going to make that information public. Uh, that analysis by the civil engineers is happening now.
But when, when they were doing the big project, there is more than one road that actually gets up on top of that ridge line. There's two, uh, this Bay Knob, and there's also this one in Pittsburgh, if I remember correctly. There's another one on the other side, West, West Rutland. So there are roads that go up there. The one that they were proposing for Hubbardton to go Bay Knob was going to take off most of, uh, towards our fire department, and I'm sure most people here know where that is, to make that road feasible to get a blade up there. So my understanding is, and that's already a road, that that really probably isn't really a road. I mean, a pickup probably can get up there.
Yeah, I want there a lot earlier this month.
If you have to put concrete in there, it's what, 60 trucks loads of concrete to get up there after they blasted it? I don't know. I think your water would be worth saving if it cracks it out. Fracking through the mountain might take out your aquifer, but okay.
Okay, Sam, do you have an answer, a quick answer to that?
That information, all, is, all, fair question. All that information is going to be forthcoming over the course of the next year as we do the civil engineering work. We obviously have to do that kind of work. Again, we're not looking, uh, we're not, uh, we don't project even submitting a permit application for another year because of these things that we need to look at.
Any other questions? Gentleman in the back?
Uh, Heath Gaiet, I'm local fire chief. What are we looking at emergency service-wise? Are we going to need to respond to anything at this, at this control site? If something goes wrong? You, I, you've seen the, the horror stories on TV of these things burning? What am I looking at?
Okay. Great question. I don't, I don't have the answer for you, but I can find that out. Uh, to, it's not something that has, that I've been made aware of that there's an issue, but, but it's a fair question to look at.
You know, if you've seen pictures on TV of on fire, you know, the blade's falling off, and so on and so forth. Would it, I just question, what emergency service-wise are we going to be?
Yep.
Looking at to deal with these things?
Yep. I think that's a great question.
Okay.
I'll get back to you on that.
Yes, sir. The gentleman next to Heath?
Has Mr. Blisseldorf ever been found in violation?
Uh, please, sir, would you identify yourself?
Nicholas Lanko, Belgo Road.
Okay. Thank you.
And has Mr. Blisseldorf ever been found in violation or fined for any of his wind projects in the state of Vermont by the Public Utility Commission?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question, though.
Well, I do.
I figured as much.
Okay. He's been fined in, in 2017, $2,500, and then again, $5,000 for running Georgia Mountain Wind under icy conditions. Again, in 2018, he was fined $10,000 for running them again at high speeds in icy conditions for the third time. In 2018, he was fined $10,000 for constructing two net-metered wind turbines in unapproved location in Irisburg. And that's a few. I wanted to print them all out and give them to the select board, but I didn't think I could buy enough ink at Staples to print this all out. I'd be happy to, uh, email it to the board.
Thank you. Senate, Senate in care of the, Senate in care of the town manager?
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? One more. Here we go. Roy, and then we, we've got a full agenda, folks. We, we do have to move on.
Is it possible, or have you thought of it, moving the, uh, wind turbine by helicopter to the top of the mountain? Is it possible, or have you thought of it, moving the, uh, wind turbine by helicopter to the top of the mountain?
Yeah. I, I, I don't know. Um, the, uh, I know that what the plan is, is to take it up Grandpa's Knob Road by truck, and that the towers are in sections, and they can be trucked up there. The, the, what I understand from the civil engineer is that, that obviously the 143-foot blade, that's a single blade, it's fiberglass. That has to get up there. Whether it can get up there by helicopter or not, that's a fair question, um, and look into it. I, I got one more question.
One more question from board member.
Uh, Sam, is, to my understanding, there's a gate across the road right now and it's locked?
Yeah.
Can that be accessible so we can have a site visit of it at some time, or does that have to be arranged ahead of time, or?
Yep, I'm just making notes here, Ms. Downs' comment, question. I, I completely agree that a site visit would be a good idea. That needs to get organized. The owners of the land, uh, they know that people snow machine up there, they know that ATVs go up there, but it is private property and they don't want people just thinking it's, it's a public road that anybody can drive up.
Sure.
Um, and they have tried to protect that 726-acre parcel, right, except they can't. But I completely agree with you that all the select board members of the surrounding towns should have an opportunity to do a site visit. I don't see, I mean, that, that, that's a perfectly logical request. It would probably, uh, the question is, how quickly could we arrange that? Whether we need to do that immediately, if we can arrange that now, or does it make more sense to do it in the spring when, after the snow melts? But absolutely, it's like that.
Probably in the spring, it's just getting a little late now, so, yeah.
Okay, Downs?
There will be an opportunity, both at the time of the hearing officer's, uh, examination and at the time of presumed appeal of that decision, no matter what it is, to the full board. Both of them will have site visits, uh, and you'll have, uh, opportunities in both of those instances to be able to say.
Will be notified of that, Downs? Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, folks, we'll, I'm afraid we have to move on. Um, we do have a full agenda.
A bunch of questions that still need to be answered while we have the opportunity.
Those, those questions, this is just an update. There'll be, there'll be opportunities in the future, definitely, to do that.
If our town, excuse me, if our town plan says no, and all the other town plans say no, why, why do we have to keep going through this?
Because people have, have the right to go through the permitting process, and the decision will be made. That's all I can tell you, I don't know any more about it than you do. Okay, with that, I'm sorry, but with that in mind, we're going to move on.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it.
How did he just turn the lights on?
Somebody put the light.
Who did that?
How did they do that, over there on the wall?
Oh, they did it right there, I think.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
They did it on purpose.
No problem.
Okay, the, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of a quote from Lafayette's for guide rail replacement on Drake Road in the northwest and southeast sides of the bridge. We all have copies of this. Uh, is there a motion? Is there a recommendation from the manager?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify. Uh, this was brought to the board's attention by Mr. Spalding. Um, there was broken wooden posts up there that have, uh, cables through them. They're no longer, you no longer can use that method, it's not even recognized anymore. So when I called to ask about that, um, that's when I was informed of that. And the way to, uh, fix the problem that Mr. Spalding brought forward about people can actually go off the road and end up down on the highway on Route 4, um, was to put in these type guardrails. Um, this, this quote is the Lafayette's doing the work, not us, they have the tools to do that, we really do not. So this quote, if it doesn't really say that, um, they would be doing the work too.
Okay, what's your recommendation?
Well, it's the only place I can find to do the work, so, um, if we want that fixed and not have cars have a chance to go off the road up there and over the bank, then I would recommend hiring Lafayette's to install these guardrails.
When would they be willing to do that, or able to do that?
They're waiting for me to call them back and to, because if longer I wait, winter's going to close them out, so.
Do, do, do we do the new ones or the used ones, like?
Used ones.
We go, go with you?
I would say go with the used ones.
Okay.
They're, they're still in good shape, they just might be oxidized a little bit.
Joe?
I'd make a motion that we approve this, uh, proposal from Lafayette Highway Specialties for the replacement of the guardrails using used material for a total cost to include installation of $6,970.
A second?
I'll second it for discussion.
There's a second, discussion? Mike?
I have two questions on this. One is, why are we paying for this if it was done by a vehicle through a car insurance? Shouldn't the insurance company be paying for it? And second of all, why couldn't Jersey barriers work for a hell of a lot less money and do the same thing?
I can answer the first one quickly, um-
Because that information was given to the town on two or three different times on that car insurance and never got looked into, which is really, to my opinion, BS.
I've never, this is, never heard of anybody reporting that accident. The, first time I heard about the guardrails even being broken was when Bob brought it to my attention, I went up there. Do you have a year when this happened?
I don't, but I can find out.
Because it's been, they're, they've been broken for a while. They're rot, they're rotting.
Yeah.
So, and then the second part of it, um, you said was insurance?
No, Jersey barriers.
Jersey barriers.
Jersey barriers.
Jersey barriers aren't, aren't, aren't a authorized method of containing-
They do make some that will take that, that will do the same thing. They put them in highways, I drive by miles and miles and miles of them.
Mike, if you guys want to chase that around or want me to chase around, I will, I'm proposing a, the fix before winter. Um, so I'll leave it at that, I guess.
Other discussion, Bob?
I just want to make a comment, I'm still displeased that the state of Vermont just left us hanging out there. I just, I feel it's their responsibility and I just want that on the record.
And they're leaving anybody hanging that doesn't have their records, because they don't have their records anymore.
I know, but it's-
And we don't have them either.
It goes over their highways, what I'm saying, but, you know. Bottom line is, we wouldn't have this bridge to make, you know, we wouldn't need these guardrails if that highway wasn't there. Thank you, Dick.
No, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you guys, I'm just, uh, you asked me to do the research and it's not-
I know.
We don't have it in our vault, and they say they lost it during migrations throughout the years, so it comes down to, uh, you want to battle it out in court.
I know.
It'll cost probably more than $6,970 if we do.
Yep. I have one comment before we proceed. Just this, this much, I think Mike's point of there may or may not be an insurance claim involved in this should be investigated, but in the meantime, I propose, I'm willing to vote yes for this motion to get the road fixed, to make the road safe, and then if we can recover money from an insurance company, we should by all means do so.
Joe?
I'm ready to vote.
Ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Was that Mike or?
No.
Mike, okay, thank you. Moving on. Contract extension with Pete Ruby for rental of the Winter Salt Shed area for an additional two years. I believe you have copies of the proposed lease. Is there a motion?
Still $4,000 a year, Mike? It is, and there, the, the backstory is, I, I've talked to Pete a couple different times. He's in a, he agreed to make the repairs necessary to the outside of the building, uh, for the door, to, to fix the doors, and, um, he, this goes through '22. He didn't realize that, he thought this thing ran out in 2020 and we hadn't renewed it. We've actually renewed it, and it is valid through May of 2022. Um, so you don't have to act on it tonight. I brought it before you because we're going to do something at, down the road, but I'm not sure if everybody's seen this lease agreement and if there's, there's anything that you want to see added into the lease agreement before it gets brought back to Pete. I'm throwing it on the table to you now, and so you can, you can shelve this and, um, because what, what, what wasn't clear was with, if he received the second $4,000 payment, and Melanie's looking that up for me, because I only found one canceled check for $4,000, and it's $8,000 over the two-year period. So what we may owe him, $4,000 for that second year of this current contract. But as far as moving forward, um, if you guys look at this and you want to change something, um, we, we can come back and I guess discuss it, Jim, we don't need to, you don't need to act on it right now.
Well, that's what I wondered, if it doesn't run out till May?
Yeah.
If it doesn't run out till May.
But I just wanted to get it out here now so you can look at it, and then if there's something that we need to negotiate with Pete about, we can do that before end of May of next year.
Have you looked at this, Mike? Do you have some thoughts in your head, is that what?
Yeah, there's, the only thing I, I was looking at was, um, if, if Mother Nature does something that, like, the roof flies off and, and our salt gets totally soaking wet, um, and it's, it gets to a point where it's not usable or it becomes a problem, it doesn't really address that in here, so.
Okay, so we have some issues, we better wait.
No, I, I'd recommend you wait and take a look at it, and it's, this was generated or created a long time ago.
Sure. Can we make a motion, do tables to another meeting at another time?
A second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Table. Review and approval of the winter salt bids. Mike? Believe you have a recommendation on this?
Yeah, I think it's around the bottom of it, on number five.
It is, yeah.
We had two bids, um, and I found out Cargill is what the state of Vermont went with this year. Normally, they, they help barter a deal for the municipalities under the districts, and this year they didn't. And, um, I'm actually, I felt fortunate that when we called Cargill's that they came, the price that they, they gave us, I thought it was going to be closer to what Appalachia gave. So I was pleasantly, um, pleased, I guess, that it came in. It's actually, I looked, I looked at this in 2018 and 19, we were paying more per ton then than we are now, uh, uh, this, this quote.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, is this the same material we've been using, because we've bought historically from Cargill in the past?
You have, then we went to Appalachia, that's that pink Egyptian salt. Um, it is better quality, uh, the salt.
Which is better?
Appalachia's better, uh, what I saw. Um, I was in there with Heath and we looked at it one day, and it's just bigger kernels of, of material so that, a- as they explained, it'll stay in the road longer. But it's also, you know, $9 or, almost $20 a ton more, and we're going to buy 800 tons of it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Heath to weigh in on this?
Sure.
Which, which, you've used both, which one do you think does a better job, and is the Appalachia worth 15,000 a year more?
The price, the price sets a tone, I'm, I'm afraid. I, I do like the effectiveness of the Appalachia, the pink salt, I think, I don't want to say Appalachia. I think the effectiveness is, is to stay and work longer for us, but for that, that much of a price difference, Barretts and Cargill have done a good job for us for a long time.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of winter road salt from Cargill in the amount of $72.31 a ton delivered, not to exceed 1,000 tons or $82,000.
A second?
And a second? Discussion?
Pick one?
Pick one? Yeah, whatever.
Mike, you?
I'm good.
No?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're now on to another exciting thing. Approval of snowplow blades and shoes.
Okay, where'd I hit?
My recommendation's on there, Mr. Chairman.
Your recommendation?
After doing all that math and going through all the bids we got and sorting through it, because if I would have given you what I received in the mail, um, you would have been, probably have to turn it upside down, sideways, and-
Where is it, you got it?
That one right there, Mike.
Um, my recommendation is, is option number one.
Oh, right here.
That's, uh, 4560?
Yes, and it's used in two different vendors.
Okay.
My only question there, with your, it's okay, Jim, is, uh-
Sure.
Will, um, Fairfield and Clark's honor their, well, obviously Fairfield will, it's the only thing they bid on, but will they honor their price if they only get part of this, or was this whole thing from Clark's a package?
It was not a package.
Okay.
Okay.
In that case, I'd make a motion that we approve the town manager's recommendation for option one buying snowplow shoes and blades from HP Fairfield and Clark's Truck Center for a sum total of $4,560.99. I'll second it.
And a second? Discussion?
Yeah, one other thing is, um, at this price, can we be locked in, guaranteed that this is going to be it? And, and is this available now?
That's why I picked them too, Mike, they're, they're, it's the cheapest and they're available.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Acceptance of grants and aid funding to assist the town bring eight 100-meter road segments into municipal road general permit standards in 2022. Believe you have that information in your packet. Is there a motion?
Where is it? I'm sure there's a word motion.
It's, basically, if, you'd be, um, accepting, we, we applied and you're, you'd be accepting the FY '22 Grants and Aid Project for 14-
Eight.
14 eight. Got this sheet in the back, Mike.
And then we don't have to give them the road segments at this point.
Yeah.
So it's just, whether we want to participate is basically what it is. Well, we, we already said we want to participate, now we're accepting what they've given us for an offer.
I'll take a stab at it. Make a motion, we, we accept, is the right word? We accept the fiscal year 2022 Grants and Aid Program and the Agency of Natural Resources and the Agency of Transportation for the sum of $14,800.
Second? And a second? Discussion? Being none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. MHG Solar Project Updates and Approval of Payment, uh, for the title of the property, Mike?
So, in open session, um, just to, an update, the, at the solar project, uh, they're waiting for this title so that Green Mountain Power can put the power lines across that piece of property that we don't currently own. If that makes sense. So, you have a copy of a, an offer presented by our attorney, um, but that's what's holding the project up right now, um, is the, getting the, uh, the power to the project. And, um, you'll see that when we talk about it in executive session, but that's just an update of, of the, where they're at right now.
Okay. So, you wouldn't expect any motion on this now?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on. Truck purchase for the transfer station. I believe that's also in our packet. Mike?
Yes, and you, I gave you a late one, I got it today from Chuck Williams for the Silverado, um, which is more expensive, and I tried to give you guys an explanation is they can't order any more trucks through the fleet pricing, so it, it's retail, so you get some of the fleet pricing discounts off it, but you don't get all of them, so we're losing about two grand. So the difference between the Ford F-250 and the Chevy Silverado is approximately two grand.
The Silverado's $2,000 more.
More, so the original quote that I showed you or gave you from McGee Ford, um, is the cheaper, it has the, it's a basic no-frills truck with a plow, a straight plow.
Can't get that anymore?
What's that?
And we can't get that at the fleet pricing anymore?
Didn't, well, the Ford is at the fleet pricing, but for Chevy, um, they can't order anymore through fleet at this point, so, um, it's a, that's why, otherwise it would have been about the same pricing, but because of the issue that they're having, um, it costs more right now.
Forgive my confusion, then the Ford is no longer available?
No, Ford is, but Chevy's not, Chevy is more money.
Yeah, okay.
But the Ford is available, um, with, you can see what's on it, there's nothing really on it, but, um, if you guys do make a motion, I talked to Melanie tonight, we need a motion to, you accept it, then we have to have a motion that, or part of that motion will be it comes from the reserve, and I have that number here if you'd like it. And I don't have a purchase order, but you'd have to approve the purchase order as well.
Who wants to take a stab at that one?
There's three things, so it's-
I'll take a stab at it.
What's your recommendation, the Ford or the Chevy?
My recommendation is the Ford, it's cheaper and it gets everything that we wanted.
And then the state, only that I just heard this through three of the people of the state, they're, and I'm a Chevy fan, they're having an awful- They're having an awful problem with the Chevys and they're having dash problems and everything. So they all gone to the Fords and the Dodges, so I think we should go with the Ford. And I can't believe I said that.
I like Chevy's too, but...
But I'll make, I'll stab, want me to stab at this one?
Yeah. Go for it.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we go with the Ford of the state pricing for $28,374 with the Fisher eight-foot heavy-duty straight blade for $7,383 and zero cents for a total of $35,757 even.
Is there a second?
From, from, it has to be from McGee Ford.
From McGee, oh, I'm sorry. Well, from McGee Ford and with a delivery date of approximately 30 weeks.
I'll second it. And a second? Discussion?
Now, do we have to specify in that motion also that which reserve account it comes from?
Yeah.
I was going to make another one. You want it all in the same one, Mike?
It can all go in the same motion.
And then I'll make a motion that we take the money from the reserve.
Transfer station reserve.
The transfer station reserve. And I also will make a motion that we give, we have the, a motion to have Melanie write a, take, transfer the money?
If you, make a motion to have Jim sign the purchase order.
And make, okay, then I'll make my motion to have Jim sign the purchase order when Melanie gets it to him.
In the amount of...
In the amount of $35,757 even.
I'll second all that, Michael.
Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
And if you want to know, in the, in the reserve right now, there's $101,942 in the transfer station.
Okay. Managers report. Any questions for the manager on his report?
That's a 10-year truck, right?
Yeah.
Jimmy, let me do it.
Just to speed the meeting up, I'm not saying nothing.
That's okay. That's okay.
It's going to have to be because I'm not.
Right. All right, there are no questions for the manager? Would you like to briefly summarize, Mike?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, so on page, nothing, we already talked about the grants and aid, so I'm on page two.
Where is it?
Transfer station. I believe you all received a copy of Wade Mousure's safety assessment that he did at the transfer station in the highway garage. Just to let you know, Chris Fouracre has been diligently working on fixing a lot of those deficiencies through the SOPs and procedures and policies that we're supposed to have in place. He, he had Wade come back to visit the transfer station, Joe Rice did, I'm sorry. Joe Rice had Wade come back to clarify what he wanted fixed on the handrails and the chains around the bins. So that's clear now what, what's expected and Joe's working with Bob Ward to get that completed. That was on, on page three. We already talked about the vehicles. Side, at the bottom of page three, sidewalk project phase one, they're getting pretty darned close to getting the bulk of the work done. They still have to do the, some paving. They still have to do the shoulders. We know that grass is probably not going to grow well right now, so part of that punch list, they're going to come back in the spring to reseed it, but they know that. They did do a turning, they have a turning program that the engineers use for the, the vehicles coming off from Route 30 directing this to the board, but Mike Holden had asked about that. They did the steering analysis and the truck can make it in there, but what I found out was that, that opening is actually a little bit bigger than it was in its original. So if they made there, through that in the original, the engineers were saying if they made, they should be able to make it through there now. So, but I did, you asked me to follow up, I did, and they, they got back to me with, and they showed, they gave me the study if anybody wants to see it.
Can I ask you a question before you leave that?
Yeah.
I know probably what you're going to answer. Why are those sidewalks so high, Mike? They are, they're out of control. But why are they so high? Is Route 30 going to be paved with like eight inches of asphalt?
There's curbing.
Way high.
It's the curb that's hot, they, they put the curb there in a lot of those places. You notice most of it is at elevation, the previous elevation or, but there are some places where they put the curb in there, so the curb is a little higher.
I, I know the curb is up there.
That's Vtrans requirements, not ours.
It just looks, it looks...
It is real.
Once they pave up to it, you, but one of the things that hopefully it'll help too is when stormwater hits, it, it follows the curb and it will get to the drop inlets rather than on everybody's property and everything else, so.
Okay, okay. It just looks really weird. You can go on. I just wanted to get you before you left that guy.
All right, okay. On page four, under 5C, the sewer plant, I know we're not talking to the Board of Sewer Commissioners here, but I, I, I really want to have a meeting with you guys to, to update you on what I found out about draining that tank. Because what you thought last meeting, that 200 and something thousand dollars, that is true. I'm looking at you, Bob, because you asked that question.
Yeah, I did. That was true.
So, what I found out was depending on the percent solids that are in that 400,000 gallon tank will determine what we get for dry. And you saw it's $1,829 a ton to get rid of it or process it. Plus there's the hauling fees. It's going to Canada now. So, we're, we're probably looking at somewhere around $325,000 to have that thing drained, inspected and repaired. And so I've been asking the questions now is, if we don't do anything, is, is it going to be some catastrophic failure and half the sewage and castle will be in the Castle River? And the answer is no. But they, they don't recommend that you let that hole linger because we have to keep the level down below it now. So we're, we're doing a lot more removal of, of the sludge. And it's not giving it as more, as much time to settle out. So, I think it's warranted to have a Board of Sewer Commissioners meeting soon, so. Because if you go this route, right now, I, I talked to Alyssa from Senesac and we just ordered the bottle so they can do this, this, to test the solids and on all the chemicals that they test for. But if we don't make a decision, then we're going to be shut out by winter anyway. And I've been trying to get a response or an answer from Wade, Wayne Elliott is, if we wait, is there any, does anybody see any harm in that as far as the structure and stability of that, of that tank? And my gut feeling is, without somebody coming out and saying, no, nobody wants to commit to yes, wait or no. They're not putting their, they're saying, well, you know, it's been like, it's been there a long time and... So I, I just think it's a prudent to have a meeting with, with the Board of Sewer Commissioners, discuss this in the next week or so.
Can't kick that down the road, down the road forever, though.
Well, don't, don't we have a meeting next Monday on ARCO funds?
Yeah.
Can you put that in there?
Yeah, I mean, it'd probably take us 15 minutes, I'll bet, so we can add a, a special meeting into that of the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
Okay. Is that agreeable to everyone? Okay, go ahead.
ARCO meeting still scheduled for 6:30?
I think it's 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Okay.
6 o'clock.
Okay, got it. Paving, the, North Road's been paved. They're going to work on shoulders this, they're going to work on it this week, but today it wasn't, weather didn't cooperate. Since you're putting dirt out there in the pouring rain, it was going to not be such a, a good choice. But, so North Road was paved from the bridge, the, the bridge that goes over the river north, the Burnhouse Corners. So they still have to pave from Main Street to the south side of the bridge that goes over the river. What we had problems with is getting the railroad to do the, come in and do the flagging. They came one day, they showed up and said, what do you want to do? Then they called and said, shut down the trap, shut down the train and left. So that was one day and we couldn't get it all done. There's no way to get it done in one day. So they're going to have to carry that over into the spring as well as Mill Street over the, you know, over the railroad tracks, Crampton Road from Route 4A, over the tracks and down the base of the hill on the, on the north side. And then East Crystal Haven, West Crystal Haven and Crystal Loop or Lane, Crystal Lane. So, and there's a lot of work for us up there. That's going to take half the spring to get that ready. So, that's what's completed. There's an invoice that was in the packet I signed today to pay Wilkes for the job that's been done. Any questions on paving?
Are we, they're going to come back next year, but are we still getting locked in at this year's prices? Or are we going to have to pay the difference?
It depends. In our contract, if it goes, if there's a difference of 10%, then it could benefit us or it could harm us, if you want to look at it that way. And usually in the spring, the price is down of liquid asphalt, so it benefits us to, to have it in the spring. That's...
You better look at the price of fuel.
Well, I know, but that's before, now we're going to be paying $5 a gallon for gasoline, but, but yeah, you're right. Good point. So, we'll see, I guess, what spring brings us.
Okay, move on.
I'm on page five still. Crack sealing. They were working on it last week. Chris was trying to track them down to find out where they'd been already because he only found part of East Harbor and Road done and wasn't one other road. I can't remember. Was it?
Drake.
Drake Road, yeah. So, we haven't, I haven't got an answer back on what they're done or not. What I seen, they're not done. On page six, the assistance of firefighter grant stuff, am I, I put, I let the board know that both of those were disapproved? Okay. I'll come back to you on the fire department and police department, or at least maybe the chiefs will, about the money from the hazardous materials bill. And I'm still working on the parking ride with Paul McClure to get those lights fixed before winter. There's only one of those solar lights that's working right now. And pending your questions, gentlemen, that would be it.
And one other question, Mike, on the paving?
Yeah.
Are we going to do something? I know you can't get paint, you can't get anybody to paint it. But we should, two things we should do is get signs up there saying there's no center line on that road for liability and for safety issues. And the other thing, we should probably get those stick on, I know they're expensive, but get those stick on center lines and edge lines because we have accidents up there. They're going to raise hell with that because you can't, you can't say who was on whose side of the road because you've got nothing to, nothing to go by. So, you know, I think you're going to open us up to a can of worms.
You're correct. I talked to Paul Egan about this this weekend, because I got to go back and look at the contract because I believe in the contract, it states they got to put them in. That's been kind of the thing in the past, but... Yeah, and I talked to Paul and he said, yeah, I've been out there putting them myself because they don't have the manpower. So if they, if it's in the contract and they didn't do it, then we may have to work out a deal with them to get the materials even to help start putting them back on. But, but yeah, I, I've already, I've already, it's already been brought to my attention.
Anything else, Mike?
I'm good.
You're good? Bob? Bob? Joe? Dick? We're all good? Okay, thanks, Mike. Purchase orders for approval. You have a copy, fellas, you can use, or do you want this?
Want me to start it, Dick, or you want to?
You can go ahead, Dick.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve, let's see, I hope I got the right ones. I got the, I got the wrong ones, I think. I got the copies of one. The purchase order for Ferguson Water Works, number 0471, no, 047466 for the amount of $5,154.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Is it for Culverts? Yeah.
And that's, that's wrong on there. That's not Shelbert Culvert, that's actually Barker Hill.
Barker Hill, I should put on there?
I cracked it down originally.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that?
I did second it.
Did a second, good. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make an, an order, a thing to approve purchase order number 047527 for Toray Bean Incorporated for the amount of $2,381.12.
I'll second that too.
That is the bid price, too.
Winter tire chains?
Winter tires.
Winter tires.
Winter tires for the police cars.
They run those all year round.
We have a motion on that and a second?
Yeah, I did second it.
And a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Next one?
I'll make a motion for purchase order number 047534 to Gals?
Gals.
Gals? For the price, for the total of $2,000, I'm going to guess it's a sec, $2,624.99, I believe, is what I can't, can't read it.
That's it. You got it.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
There's a second, right here.
And a second? Discussion?
Just for the minute.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Dick.
Will approve vest for the police department.
And 50% paid for by DOJ grant.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Are we now on to warrants?
We are.
On to warrants? Who'd like to do those?
I'll do those.
Okay, Dick.
ARCO motion, we approve warrant number 1025R for $20,833.33. Warrant 1025 for $389,189.14. Warrant 1021 for $6,390.92. Warrant 1015 for $25,749.74. Warrant 1021P for $17,333.96. Warrant 1014P for $16,486.44.
I'll second.
And a second? Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion for number 1022P for the amount of $628.33. And number 1015P for $628.33.
I'll second it.
And a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I recuse myself.
Dick recused himself. Bob?
Oh, here we go.
Okay. While we're signing those, do we have anything, oh, select board comments a better way.
I'll sneak next to you about you.
Sure.
I've never been to a select board meeting, so it's kind of interesting. Do you have like a time when, like I can ask a question later? Or did you do that after the time? Sorry.
You, you've been very patient, so you go ahead and ask your question.
Well, I just have a question and it made me think of it when you guys were talking about coming up. So I dropped my child off and pick him up every day at the Castleville Village School.
Yeah.
And last year I talked to you about it earlier this year, last school year, where there was the big holes and you guys filled them in. Thank you so much. But I have seen on multiple days, myself included, almost getting hit because you guys have done a great job. I saw you went and painted like the crosswalks again. But when you come out of the village school, if there are cars parked here, you cannot see around and you just about have to go out into the road to see if there's any traffic coming. And I've seen multiple cars, including myself, almost get hit because you can't see. And I happened to notice, I think it was today, that there does look like there's like lines where people aren't supposed to park there, but they're very faint, like you can barely see them. I don't know if it can, they can be repainted or like something go there so people don't park right there.
Is it on, I'll try and answer.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Is it, is it in the street parking lot or is it in the street?
No, it's like right in front of that, um, Michelle's...
Right in front of the beauty, the old Bargain Center.
Okay, oh, I see. Oh, so when you're pulling off from Mechanic Street onto Route 4A, you can't see.
Yeah, like to your left.
Especially when you turn left.
Right. You cannot see there.
Right in front of the bakery.
Right. Yeah, that would be our responsibility.
Yeah, and she's right. I mean, there, there was a crosshatched area that was meant to prohibit parking.
I'm, every day when I go to drive up to it, I'm always afraid then somebody's then going to come into the crosswalk on this side of me and it just, I know you're not going to have much longer to worry about it if, you know, the school's closed. But for now, it would be great if it was empty.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Would you, could you identify yourself for the record?
Jan Nicholson.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I did have a comment.
Yes, Bob?
There was a couple places in town that, that, and you're in a big truck or a big vehicle. Trees and limbs are hanging out.
Yep.
Four Corners in Blissville, prime example, when you're headed across Rice Willis Road, you can't see. And a car is fine because you're underneath the branches. you can't see, and a car is fine, because you're underneath the branches, but unfortunately, it's on somebody's property that's, you're probably not going to want the tree limbs cut. And then the other places, up here on Drake Road. Pull out a God, that was Andrew's Garage, the limbs and stuff are hanging over on the neighbor's property to the south. They all need to be trimmed back.
He, that neighbor approached me about it, and I said, can you show me where your property line is for the right of way, and he was very adamant that was his property, so I'm like, okay, you can cut what you want down, because he was making the same kind of complaint, not about pulling out of Todd's, but
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
Pulling out of his place, yeah. I just don't want to see an accident happen, that's all.
But you said the intersection of Blissville and Rice Willis?
Yeah, when I'm headed towards Thor Haven on Rice Willis Road, yeah, looking either way.
You know, another, since the Raylins and the Masons have not gotten along, the parking in front of Rayland Store has, has gotten out of control on some days, I mean, where trucks are way out into the roadway. They just don't have any alternatives.
Well, you know, these are all great points that, not to push it off right now, but it's, there was a meeting that Rutland Regional Planning Commission talked about the scoping study in the village, about extending some of those pedestrian walks out farther, because I agree, you, you can't see to pull out of these businesses, but the, because the, the shoulders are so wide on Main Street, abnormally wide, people park there and then you can't see beyond it, so I think it's, I don't know, there's nothing we can do now, Joe, but it's certainly, I think, worthy of exploration during this pedestrian safety, because it's not just pedestrian safety, it's vehicular safety as well.
Yeah, I, I think some of it is a conversation with John Rayland about his suppliers, because there are ti, many times when there's a place where they could pull their truck and be out of the roadway, but it would just mean they would have to, you know, walk another seventy-five feet or so to make their delivery, but they like to be parking as close to the store, understandably, as possible, but that puts them in the roadway.
So, they're not between, they're not between the, the two places, but they're on, are they on the east side?
They, they just park right out in front of the pumps.
Okay, okay. I, I'll certainly have that conversation with John.
I saw Coca-Cola the other day parked in front of that house to the east of the pizza place. And he was quite a ways away from the shoulder, so he was almost out in the driving lane where he's parked.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for, or select board comments?
I'm good.
You're good. Bob?
I'm done.
You're done. Joe, Dick?
Just one thing, an update on the Cedar Act Committee. Mark Brown has resigned as chairman, and I believe that he has resigned from the board as well. We're in the process of trying to recruit a new chairman. Doesn't going to change our mission, but just thought the board should know.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Anything else? Joe?
Well, I, you know, I, I, I think we should thank Mark for his service.
Can we get a letter to him, Mike? Thank him for his service?
Yeah, I still haven't done Joe Kenny's letter. I gotta get that done too, so I can add that to the list.
Okay.
What have you been doing? Why'd you say that from a distance?
Anything else to recap? If not, is there a reason for executive session, Mike?
Oh. I don't know when I was supposed to, you asked me to come here to talk to them about this letter?
Yeah, right next.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that an executive session? Okay.
So would that be personnel, Mike?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel at
Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five with the board, the town manager, and the fire chief.
All those in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I would second that.
We're in executive session.